Meeting. Okay, this will be the second meeting in April. It's a limited meeting. It's going to be to do some deliberations on some open matters. Let me close hearings matters. There will be no public hearings this evening and we'll also be conferring with council and our consultants with regard to going forward. On another matter which will be in May. I expect the meeting hopefully will last an hour to an hour and a half. Which will be a pleasant change or different than the other meetings. We have four members here today. We have Brian Gladstone, we have Greta Hinni and Robin Kramer and myself. We have counsel. Whose name you are using a wrong name Charlie. I just want you to know that you are not Brittany.
I will change that.
And we have Ashley here and Brian here as well from OK. So why don't we begin in light of the fact that we have some other people here, the consultants and discuss the issue about the FEIS procedurally? And I think that. We have a draft now of it. And it is our document, so we have to discuss the finalization and how to go about that. And then the finding statement, I suppose, that will be taken place after that. And that will be we will discussing that and starting the finalization process at the May meeting. Possibly concluding it then, I don't know. Charlie, if you want to discuss the procedure and then we can ask the consultant so they can buy in and we can discuss some items.
Sure. So we received a revised draft final environmental impact statement referred to as the FEIS. That document is really a comment and response document to all of the comments that have been made by members of the public. Members of the zoning board of appeals and their related consultants. That document, when it's finalized, will also include any changes to the draft environmental impact statement that are needed. So the FEIS is a combination of the response to comments and then including the actual environmental impact statement. As it typically goes under SECRE, the project sponsor or the applicant prepares the draft final environmental impact statement. Pursuant to the secret regulations, this is actually a document that belongs to the lead agency, which is yourself, the ZBA. So you know, it would be incumbent upon us to review the applicant's responses in the FEIS. If you have additional comments, you can explore those additional comments. With the project sponsor, it we should discuss at the May meeting. It might be helpful for the board to hear a presentation from the applicant on their draft FEIS, what they included. If you feel like something is missing, you can ask about that and see if it was further investigated and so forth. But the board should consider whether or not the manner in which the FEIS is drafted and how it's responded to the comments that have been added. Or that that have been added into the record is adequate and whether or not you agree with the way the applicant provided responses to comments. The ZBA should then discuss with Ashley and others at AKRF about maybe some responses. You technically don't agree with, or you have trouble understanding. And then it is this board's document to draft and to accept. Once you're comfortable with the document and what it states, we would prepare a resolution and you would officially deem it complete. Once it is deemed complete, then. Excuse me, my daughter is screaming in the background for a hug.
You can bring her in. One member and there you go.
Once the document is deemed complete, it's then sent around to all the involved agency, all the involved agencies. It's made. Available for public review and then there's a 10 day waiting period. After the 10 days is up, you issue a finding statement. And your finding statement is essentially your final secret determination. It's an evaluation of the environmental impacts, whether or not you feel as though they are significant. What mitigation you might want to incorporate into the project so that the impacts that you find are significant are lessened. And that would conclude the secret process. Once a secret process is done, you kind of go back to the ordinary area variance review process that you guys already know. Balancing the five factors in New York villages law. There would be another public hearing on the underlying area variances. And then you would have a resolution. You know, after the board deliberates on the underlying area variances.
Couple of questions, something that perplexes me. If this is our right legally, it is our document. Why are we not editing it? Why are we not taking it and rewriting it and sending them revisions to the text to make it read the way we want? That's my first comment, right? Because this may not read the way we want, just because it says. You know, scientifically, you know, ASK RF makes the determination that they've answered this question, they've answered that question, they've answered the other question. Scientific standpoint, why are we not revising it? That's my first question. And then my second question, which goes to get the whole thing. The point of an EIS is to write, is to inform the board when it makes its decisions about all of the environmental impacts of the decision. So that our decision, when we get to the variance, right, we're not making the decision on the on the on the EIS. So that when we make a decision on the, we have all the environmental information we need, so we know the land use, the environmental impacts of a decision. Given that. Is that, I mean, is that correct? And if that is correct, then that's what this needs to say. And then my third thing is way back. I had understood, in fact, I threw out a draft because I had understood that we were getting a final complete copy instead. Pieces, here are these pages and here are these pages and here are these revised pages. And it's very difficult, given that this is our document, to read a document and say, this thing, this FEIS. Is the document that we as a board have determined is appropriate. So I think we need, all the board members need a complete copy of the final revised FEIS before we can possibly say. That this is it, because otherwise we just have, so those are all my thoughts, comments, questions on.
Yeah, there's Robin, I just want to comment on that if I make quickly and that is I completely concur with you. I think that. It's 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 like editing someone else's as opposed to being your own and it and it can be a very different approach. I think that one of the more important things at this moment or at this time is to make sure we have all the information. That it was to be provided, because that's still a predicate for it and that's one of my concerns. But I do share your concern and your comments over. That and we may very well want to have it written in in our own. Language, our own style. It also is that one of the things is I understand if you could just elaborate on Charlie is that once we do a finding statement. Then all other agencies involved in the process that will be taking place, their own for their own permits as well as our own. I really have to comply with that findings. They can be, they can go further. But generally, they can't try to reinvent that because this was a. What do you call that when it's not cohesive, but it's a it's a coordinated.
coordinated review.
Right. So our coordinated review was such, they can't come out with. A very different approach. They can say that there's higher sensitivity in their area and they can go into that. But basically, we do set the tenor and the tone, which I think is particularly complicated to some degree in this matter, but we will deal with that. So I think it's a matter of missing information. And that's probably the focus that I'd like to, and I think that would help if we can get that one document as Robin said. Robin, I think that'd be very helpful. We have one document to then. Go through with as opposed to saying, well. Page 85 of that and page 42 of this. And that's particularly because at one point I'm looking at my notes. The the whole, which is happens as the process goes, they've actually changed much of their use of the buildings and what's going to be removed. I think the words that they used once were significant changes from what we've seen have taken place. So I don't know Charlie, what you want to comment on that and then we can.
Yeah, I'll kind of go down the list I have here. So we are now, so it is not, it is very common for the project sponsor to issue the first draft of the FEIS. Because they are the ones that have the consultants on their side and they gather the information that is requested by the public and by the board and so forth. If the board finds that the additional information that has been provided is complete, right? You have all the information, it would now be appropriate for this board to start editing the document. You know. I'm trying to think of an example, but in this FEIS, the project sponsor kind of completely revised the project. They revised what it looks like. They revised some of the height, they revised some of the architecture. So now you have kind of what the revised project is and you're able to answer the questions in the FEIS as you see fit. Giving reference to the information that the project sponsor has provided. So I think we are at that point, if this board wants to, after we speak with the applicant and ask any questions you might have, to start taking over the document and doing the editing yourself. Related to how the SECRE finding statement intertwines with the area variance test. You know, the five factors of the area variance test are somewhat intertwined with the determinations you'll make in the finding statement. For example. You know, the area variance test of no adverse impact to the neighborhood, right? We're studying that under the EIS. When we assess visual impacts, when we assess assess community character impacts. One of the area variance tests is environmental impacts essentially. So really, all of the EIS and the secret finding statement touches on that. So other than the self-created harm. The EIS, how you, you know, how you finalize it in the finding statement. Will touch on the area variant standards. So it's very important that this board deliberates very strongly, you know, before the finding statements. And make sure that we marry how you're feeling about the underlying area variances. With the environmental assessment that you've been tasked with. As far as getting a complete package of the FEIS, I think that is certainly doable and I think we can probably get that to the board with the applicant's help. Prior to, I guess it's next week's meeting. And you're right, you should have the full package. It is hard to kind of piecemeal things here and there.
Just get a better picture on what exactly was missing because we, I received everything digitally. And I did have the full text of the document. So is that not what everyone received in paper?
Is that? I don't have much at all on paper because I wasn't around when this started over a year ago.
The booklet that Dave has, that's the one that went out in the last two meetings ago, I think it was delivered, that hard booklet is the only thing.
Right. And then what happens is that refers to the DEIS and all these other electronic documents.
It's only a few pages. It's only the pages that have changes on them.
It's only the pages that have changes. Okay.
And the time and the last time we also got only the pages that had changes. We got a complete copy of the DEIS. Then we got a complete and then everything else was iterations. Then we got a complete copy, I think of the FEIS. And after that was just edits.
After that's just edits. Okay, I see. All right. So the applicant's probably not going to reprint the DEIS. So so Brian, there's, I'm sure there's a hard copy available at village hall that you can you can get or borrow.
Well, I'm I'm okay. I've I've got a big side screen and it's 529 pages. And I'm I've, you know, the thing is, and Robin has a very good point. What we are getting is not cohesive. So I find myself having to dig deeper and deeper and deeper. I asked some questions in the last meeting in November. And they point to the DIS and I have to work my way to page, God knows what on the DIS to try to find the answers. So. If there's any way to make it more cohesive, that would, that would be appreciated. Maybe some kind of a chart, but I'm working my way through it.
Okay.
Right.
So the last question was, you know, what the actions of the other involved agencies. You know, how are they impacted by your secret finding statement? So here the planning board would be an involved agency, so they can't make a decision until you issue your finding statement. Typically, involved agencies. They do have to do their own finding statement. So the planning board has to do their own finding statement. You know, I can't recall if DEC is involved, they would have to make their own finding statement and so forth. They don't necessarily have to agree with your finding statement. When they issue their own, typically, they just kind of do like a me too finding statement and they just adopt yours as their own. There are some rare cases out there where involved agency kind of does something completely different. The important thing to take note of is when involved agencies make their own secret finding statement. They're bound by the environmental record that is the entire EIS process. So they can't deviate from the four corners of the DEIS and the FEIS when they're making their finding statement. So as you manipulate and edit. The FEIS as you see fit, that will become part of the environmental record that the other involved agencies would review and. Make their determination when it when it becomes their turn after yours.
One of the items. You want to touch on some things here now with we got Ashley. One of the things the applicant has taken the position is that when we question things, they say, well, it's already been addressed and our experts or our consultants are happy. One of the questions on Charlie, you want to do this next meeting? We, well, should we just ask pose some things now?
Well, I think it's probably a good idea to give Ashley a little bit of and her team a little bit of, you know, a nod as to. What are going to be some of the larger concerns of the board so that they can kind of go back and. Review specifically those sections and come back to the main meeting when the applicant's here to further discuss.
One item I had opposed at the meeting, I guess it was last November. Was I asked at that point. I said, the site was flooded very heavily and there was a lot of machinery there, opening up walls, etc. And I said. I guess it was Hurricane Ida. And I posed the question, I said, well, can you tell me what's the nature of the damage you sustained? And at that point, they were unwilling to explain it, which surprised me. And they said, I don't have that information, but we can get it for you. Now, in just touching on this a little bit, and I'm not purporting to go through the whole thing to discuss it now, but. Basically, I guess it's on 3D7. It's another thing, these being able to identify pages is very difficult. There's not an overall numerical sequence. But they're talking about a, they say flooding has had occurred as if a supplemental EIS is not required to address flooding that occurred subsequent to the preparation of the draft. And they go on with that. And they they basically say the engineers and consultants are pleased with this. I'm not, I don't want to mislead anybody. I said so at the meeting. I mean, it's like, because temporally on a timeline. It's like if the whole idea here is to protect against certain things and evaluate them effectively so that everyone knows what they are, then. That something happened and it was after a draft, but before the FEIS. I don't understand why that wouldn't be included, that we don't play a blind eye to that. There was significant modification, there's significant damage that took place. And I think that you have to say, okay, why did that occur both to the existing building and the additional part that was not initially constructed? And I have questions about that. And. I mean, it's, it's a perfect example of, well, here's what happened. How can we avoid that? I also find that a lot of the places they say, well, we comply with this and we comply with that. We comply with the FEMA, we comply, they pick different, different regulations. I'd like you to clarify that Charlie, because it's my understanding that compliance. With existing standards is simply not the end result of a sequel process. Otherwise, you wouldn't have to have it. You'd have to have certifications that you comply. It's what's necessary. Above and beyond that, it may very well be that you don't need that much, you may even need less or you may need more. But an answer that says, oh, well, we're going to comply with that. That raises questions with me, just as it does when they say, if we're dealing with contamination, they say, well, Will, if we find contaminants, we'll address it then. Or we'll, we'll then bring in someone to take care of it. I think not. I don't really follow that. I think that that's not really what my understanding of secret is. It's to find that issue, identify it and come up with a plan that can be dropped right into place at that time. And I think that's. That's one of my questions and that. And I asked you, when you went through this, did you? Respond also to the comments that the board had at meetings that it asked and questions that were posed by different members?
We focused primarily on the comments that we, the the more technical issues that we had raised in our original memo. So no, we did not go and look at all of the comments that had great, the board had raised at the past meetings. I mean, in regards to the the secret question that you're raising about compliance with the regulations, that's a pretty typical item that comes up in most EISs. Meeting the regulations is, in many cases, is mitigating the concern, especially for things like stormwater. If you're meeting the regulations, you're mitigating the stormwater concerns because you're designing it to meet the current, the acceptable standards. In this particular case where you're where you're talking about flooding and. You know, maybe what you say is you're going to meet the regulations, but we think to further mitigate that to address sea level rise. We want you to build your entrance, you know, X number of feet higher and that's a number that you can work with the villages engineer to determine. But that would be a typical way of addressing something of that nature.
But here you have a large portion of this project that was developed and built, right? I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, that that was compliant. That being the case, doesn't that just completely negate everything then? Because when we had Hurricane Ida. Everything was compliant and yet that building was significantly damaged and. They weren't willing to even discuss it or explain it. So saying to me it's compliant doesn't answer a single thing for me, honestly. I don't want to mislead you. I don't follow that.
I think it might and and this is where, you know, at the next meeting, you can kind of go through. Each aspect of where they're saying they're compliant and using that as a mitigation because it really depends on two things. What is the environmental impact we're talking about? And are there unique features of the project site that might lend itself to needing some sort of enhanced mitigation? Versus just, you know, simply meeting the regulations, for example, stormwater is a good one. You know, is there some, is there a unique future feature of the site or a historical impact like Hurricane Ida? Where there's, you know, somewhat demonstrative evidence that meeting the standards hasn't sufficed and. To ensure that a significant impact doesn't result, the board wants enhanced stormwater controls of some sort. And what those enhanced controls could be is something AKRF could help the board with. Some municipalities, specifically in Orange County, have started to adopt some more enhanced stormwater regulations. Above and beyond those that simply the DEC require. And in those instances. A lot of the municipalities are requiring these enhanced stormwater measures. That are above and beyond kind of the regulations, realizing that flooding is a significant impact in that area. So it really depends on what is the environmental impact you're assessing. If we're talking about soil contamination. You know, and the remediation of the same, that is something where, you know, it's very strongly regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation. As far as human hazards go in the contamination. So to the extent you have mitigation that says if something is found on the site, it will be remediated in accordance with regulations. That might be okay. And it might be a little different than how this board feels about stormwater.
What if we have a position, what if we, when the modifications here? For example, we had a comment and there's a response. Is that our response as a board?
Yes. Yes. And so going back to one of the earlier questions about.
So they're assuming, so they're basically, because what I'm not finding here is that where people on the board commented. And they're, they're, I guess, they're disagreeing with that. That's like us disagreeing with ourselves effectively. Am I right?
Essentially, yes.
So another question, Charlie, because Dave has raised the issue. Of the damage done in the flood to the current structure. This board's discussed segmentation. And I believe everybody was on the same page that. You know, segmentation actually does exist with this project. So should we be including the current structure in the FEIS? And are we able to perhaps affect some remediation on what's currently built? As as part of this overall project. You know, especially if there's evidence that it's insufficient. Protections currently based upon our new experience.
Sure. Yeah. So if the board wasn't doing an EIS here, this would kind of be your classic case of segmentation, in my view. The EIS being expansive and considering the entire project site is the cure to the segmentation issue. So getting a really good understanding of what happened on the built environment. When the flooding happened or if other environmental impacts have happened to it. Those could be included in your mitigation measures for this EIS.
What happens if, I mean, the perfect example is on the the question that was posed about the damage. Basically. What happens if the board finds something can't be, or it doesn't have the information for it?
So if it doesn't have the information for it, you should always ask for it from the applicant if you choose so. Or, you know, if it's something that Ashley's office could investigate. You know, based on the information that we have, her office could run some sort of analysis on it. That's always an option. It's always best to ask the applicant. You know, for information if it's missing, you know, if that's the case and you feel like you're missing information. There is language in the regulations that allow you to not deem the FEIS complete until you feel like you have all the information you need.
So we should be going through this to find items that we don't think were responded to or that we feel necessary in order to complete it, correct?
Right. And also, if you feel like information is correctly there. But you have a different take on the information that is provided, that is where kind of your control of the document becomes important.
So Ashley, if you were going to be redoing this or revising it so this speaks in terms that you would want the board's comments on this at the time, in other words, for the next meeting or at the next meeting, I suppose. Then you would take down and come back.
Yes. So so our focus thus far has really been on the technical. Information that was provided in the document. We did flag a few things as we were going through it that we thought were not quite in the in the ZBA's voice. But certainly having more direction from the ZBA on. Where you disagree with some of the the responses or the conclusions would guide our ability to revise the responses.
Ashley, earlier in the process, you know. Maybe on the DEIS, I don't know, this has been around so long. When the board had made comments and you had AKRF had prepared it. You had included those comments, right? you had included those comments, right? We didn't have, the board didn't have to have a separate set of comments. You included both the board. Now, are you saying that when, at the last meeting that the board discussed this, whenever that was, if board members had comments, you didn't include them in your memo?
I, I did not draft a memo based on that, on that last meeting, that the applicant was at that meeting. And I, I thought that they were taking down all of the notes to make the edits and apparently there was
Maybe it would be helpful, the Robin witness be helpful, if, if, Ashley, if you were to listen to that meeting again. Then look at this. I mean, I can just tell you, one thing I would point to was, and I mean, this is not a secret, but it's we asked about recent storms there, and they say recent storm events such as represent unprecedented conditions. Well, first of all, if they're events in the plural, that's generally not so unprecedented. That's, that's maybe a phase we're going through or something we're experiencing. And it requires an attention. And I don't, like, the questions that were posed are not answered here, to my knowledge. As to what was the damage and how? And as Brian, as you mentioned, the, the first building was considered, that one of the reasons I wanted this, they, the first building is not an old building that's, you know, 50 years old. So I'm assuming it was compliant. So being compliant is no longer a very productive or a yardstick to measure against, given that. But maybe it would help if you could go over that, Ashley, and the comments the board had with regard to it. I mean, I think they, as I recall, I mean, they came down to, and I'm just going to punt without having really thought about this then, we have the visual was a big issue. The water was a big issue. The mass was an issue. I mean, the size of the whole thing. And then it was the, the fact that surrounding areas had dealt with the there was contamination in other areas. And I remember from when this first was on before this time, when it was on for the first time, because this was paused decked. Brian, the first time they were going to do this, there was a pause deck issued by the zoning board many years ago. And what happened was, they then withdrew it and came back and cut the project in half. And that's how the segmentation came about. It was, it was literally almost in half. But
Just to add to that list, I think one of the issues here is that the water table is only about a foot under the soil, if, if I'm remembering correctly. And if you've got contaminated soil and you've got the water table, y- you know, it was very, very important environmentally to understand how they're going to do things. Really have an understanding, not just saying, well, we're going to comply with the code. Have an understanding how they're going to protect the, you know, the, the water table. You know, when they're, when they're digging down straight into it, it sounds like the foundation has got to go through the water table.
The client is here tonight and okay, the, one of the things that, that came up, the first time this was on, not at this project, but for the first portion of this project, which was built, was DEC saying that they were concerned about underwater movements of contaminants because of the locale. And I'm not sure if that's something Ashley, if you or Brian want to speak to, not Brian from the board. You're welcome to speak as well.
Yeah, I'm Brian Zeroff at AKRF, and I can speak a little bit on that.
Excuse me. What I'm interested in, it's come up before, and the board's heard this, is what is the nature of the contaminants? Well, how are they, where are they from? How are they otherwise? And where were the soil tests? Because one of the things that I do recall specifically was asking about soil testing and being told that none had been done. Now, that was before this project, obviously, this was, but when this first came before, before the EIS, before the draft was developed.
Well, I'll start off, I'm going to try to do this, because there are, you have water, you have soil, you have vapor, so you have different media, and you have a lot of different regulations that come into play. So it's not a very quick response, and I'll try to do my best. When water is involved, and to kind of focus on the initial question of DEC being interested in the water, you have neighboring brownfield cleanup program sites. So there are neighboring sites that have identified as having a release of contamination. And because of the contamination on the property, which limits the ability to redevelop it, they entered the brownfield cleanup program, which is a program that allows you to redevelop and address that contamination and then get credits for what you've done, based on the fact that contamination is there. Because typically, contamination would restrict the ability to have a future use of a property. And this program allows you to address that and have a use. So because of those, well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When you said they, you're not referring to the applicant, are you?
I'm referring to the state DEC. Yeah, DEC regulates everything in the state from an environmental perspective with the EPA as a federal umbrella over top. And when you have old properties that can't be redeveloped because there's too much environmental liability and no developer is going to go in and buy that property, the brownfield cleanup program says, hey, we'll give you these benefits, which makes it, makes it now capable of being redeveloped and they'll go in and do it. So you have brownfield cleanup program sites adjacent to this property, not, not directly adjacent, but very nearby. And so there is a concern if there is a release from those properties and that release contains volatiles. And those volatiles migrate with the flow of groundwater underneath the subject property, which is not their responsibility. It's the responsibility of the brownfield property owners. But the result is, could there be some sort of evaporation of that chemical that then builds up beneath the foundation of a building? And then goes through cracks in the floor and gets into the breathing space. That would be the main concern from the state. And one thing that they, the applicant, they included in, in the most recent responses, that they would have a vapor barrier and a sub slab depressurization system. And those are the acceptable preeminent items that would be needed to address contamination that's in the groundwater that could evaporate and get up into the breathing space. And this space is occupied by tenants or occupants of those buildings. So that's the water part.
What was the, you said vapor barrier, and what was the second aspect of that? I'm sorry.
It's called a sub slab depressurization system. The acronym is SSDS. And that's, that's, that's a very fancy way of saying a radon system. And so it's basically a, a network of slotted pipes that lie beneath the vapor barrier. So the foundation itself, say you have a six inch, six inch slab of concrete, it's pretty good vapor barrier. But as a protective measure, you're going to add this, i- it's, it's, think of it as very thick mill landfill liner type vinyl plastic. Underneath, underneath the, 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 the foundation slab. And then below that, there's a network of gravel with slotted pipe that has a, either a passive with a fan turbine or an active with a vacuum system that pulls vapors from beneath the building. So it's, it's a redundant system. It's a double layer. You have a vapor barrier that prevents vapors from going through. And then you have a vi- a vacuum system that removes the vapors that build up beneath that, that vapor barrier. And that's what's been, that's what's been identified as a measure that's been added to the foundation conceptual design for the building.
This building. What about the one that's already built?
For a building that's already built, you can do what's called a retrofit. And that could be an item that you request. So you say, okay, for new buildings, we're going to have this vapor barrier. We're going to have an SSDS or a vapor removal system. And then for the existing buildings, you're going to put in a retrofit system, a retrofit SSDS. And that is simply like going in on your existing house and adding a radon system. It's a pipe that goes into the ground. It gets sealed to the floor. It has some sort of vacuum on it, and it removes sucking out the vapors beneath the floor. So it's removing the vapors before they have a chance to go through the foundation and into the building. It's effective.
And what happens to that, to those vapors?
They go into the air. And there is no, uh, based on the potential buildup beneath the building slab, there is no regulation or restriction as to venting those vapors to the air. It's the best pla- it's the best way to do it, basically.
They're usually vented on top of the building, correct?
Yeah, you would run the stack to the roof. If it's a passive system, so it's not energy driven, you have a turbine, one of those turbines that creates a suction based on the flow of the wind. And that suction will then pull the vapors out. An active system will have an, a, an electrified blower that's attached to your electrical system that is just a giant vacuum, and it's pulling vapors up through that pipe and venting them four to six feet above the roof.
Is that more efficient, the one?
The, the powered vacuum system is more effective because it's adding a it's kind of like a sailboat versus a powerboat. Yeah. So you have a wind-driven turbine or an engine-driven system.
Are you familiar with the testing that was done for contaminants on the site? Okay. And you can, you're familiar with where it was done on the site?
Yes.
Was any of it, how did they select the locations where they did the actual testing? Do you know that?
Yeah, they did what's called a phase one environmental site assessment. The object of that phase one is to identify, recognize environmental conditions. And that's a very specific definition according to the American Society of Testing Materials, ASTM. That is the federal driver for the phase one that indicates how we have to do a phase one. And that phase one identified that there were some old tanks that you have historic fill on the property. It was leveled off to make it level, so you could put a building on it way back in the day. And there are some business practices where historically, there could be a potential for a release of contamination. Now, a recognized environmental condition basically says that you have a material release that you can see or a threat of a release or some sort of action or historical action that says, like, 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 say you had an old gas station on the property. That tank that was sitting on, say, the western part of the property, that tank is a threat of release because it's holding 8,000 gallons of fuel. And so the phase one review then looked at those potentials for release and identified recognized environmental conditions. And that's, in that FEIS that we're talking about, when they said, hey, we did a phase one. We did a phase one and we identified recognized environmental conditions. Unfortunately, it's hard to see from a, a layperson's perspective what that means. But behind that is a series of steps where they went through and checked the box on all of the federal requirements for what could be a release and what might be in the ground. And then based on that, you develop a phase two. The phase two is the active investigation where they drilled holes into the ground and then collected soil samples and collected groundwater samples. So in that phase two, they drilled nine soil borings. And then they had a protocol where they would look at, and when, when you drill a soil boring, what you do is you, you advance a core into the ground. It's a two-inch diameter core that'll pull out a four-foot section of soil that represents the core as it goes down. So say you're drilling zero to four as far as feet below grade where you're standing. You pull up that core and you can see all four feet of that zero to four section. You cut that core open, you measure it, you're taking actual volatile screening samples, which, it's called a photoionization detector. It's a detector that will suck the air in as it's coming off that soil, ionize it and tell you immediately if there are petroleum compounds there. And so they did screening. And while they did that screening, they decided that based on what you saw physically, so you can look at a sample and be like, wow, that's a really dark section. It smells like fuel. It's stained like fuel. I bet that's fuel contamination. And then you screen it with your PID and you get readings where it says there are 100, 200, or five parts per million of volatilized compounds. That, that meter can volatilize any volatiles that are in the air, and you get a reading on it. And so what they did was they drilled nine borings. In three of the borings, they did not have any olfactory or smell or visual signs of contamination, and that meter didn't have any readings on it. And so they didn't collect any samples for laboratory analysis. On six of the nine samples, they did collect samples for laboratory analysis. And they sent those into a laboratory to be quantified in accordance with New York State Department of Health ELAB. It's, it's an environmental laboratory testing certification requirement. And then when they tested those samples, they found that and, and here's where and I, I think it's Mr. Gottlieb, of cour- at least according to my assume, like he, he was talking about how different agencies tie in, you know, it was a very good review. But I wanted to be clear that DEC has the ability to enforce their requirements in a very specific way. If you have a petroleum spill, if I see one, I'm required by law to call in a spill, and then they can enforce regulations based on that spill. If you enter into the brownfield cleanup program, DEC can enforce their regulations. If you have an identified hazardous waste compound that triggers the state Superfund Act, DEC can then enforce their requirements. But based on what I've seen so far, DEC has no enforcement mechanism whatsoever at this property. There's no identified spill. There's no release of hazardous waste that we know of. But we do have these semi-volatile compounds and some low-level metal compounds in the soil that's being attributed by the applicant to historic fill. And that's a very standard thing because historic fill is everywhere. When we built New York City, the surrounding area, you had all these coal-fired power plants, you're leveling off sites, you're wondering where to put all this stuff. And it goes into leveling off sites, and then you have this layer of historic fill. And it typically has PAHs, those are polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. They are the components, the parts of the semi-volatile organic compounds that those reports were talking about. And there are some low-level metals there. You, you, and, and those are really hard because you have a lot of metals that are in naturally occurring soil. Metals are earth compounds. So you do have historic, historic fill there. Based on those results, the protocol that they use to collect the exam, the, the samples and the way they reported it, I don't see a release of contamination. But, but just remember, that's a very specific definition by the, the state DEC. Contaminants are present. They were present in the storm of historic fill, which is not a release. So DEC does not have a direct regulatory impact at this moment. But once they excavate that soil, right now it's sitting there, it's earth. Once they excavate that soil, then those compounds trigger something that makes it a regulated soil. And that's what they talk about when they refer to an excavation work plan in their FEIS. And that's what they talk about when they refer to an excavation work plan in their FEIS. They're, they're referencing, and then in that they say that we will handle excavated soil. In a way where it complies with the state requirements. And the federal requirements, and especially the requirements of the receiving facility. So when you have to ship soil offsite, it's going to a receiving facility. And they have more stringent requirements than even the state. And federal. And so. If they have to dig up a certain amount of soil to make room for a foundation and that soil has contaminants. Contaminants in it because it's historic fill. There is a set regulatory requirement where they have to put it aside. Cover it. Test it. Send those testing results to a receiving facility. And then. It gets shipped off to that facility and that's how they manage it. That's how they address. If, if during the digging. You find that there is a, hey, here's a tank that no one knew about. And there's something leaking out of that tank. That by definition, the state DEC is a spill. So you'd have to call in that spill, which is in their excavation work plan. If they have a contingency, if we, if we encounter anything that's unknown. That triggers a state requirement. Then we have to call in that spill. Now DEC is involved. Now DC, DEC has regulation. You have to address that spill in accordance with the requirements.
Was there anything that they found in their, on those six samples of any consequence? Any contaminants?
Uh, consequence, yes, in the sense that it's historic fill. Consequence, no, in the sense that I didn't see anything that would indicate a release. There could be some old contamination related to some of the old spills from those tanks. But it wasn't at a level. Where you could quantitatively say. That is a release versus that's just historic fill that we see on. Most of the sites that you would try to redevelop within the area.
Could you see any evidence that water had been, other contaminants and adjacent properties have been coming over?
Yeah, they had some, a couple of VOCs in the groundwater samples. That could be related to some, maybe some historical onsite thing with degreasing or parts management. But also is. Consistent with what you would see with the neighboring Brownfield Cleanup Program sites. And so it was detected in groundwater below the site. And it was at concentrations where. I think it was one-one TCA exceeded the groundwater GA ambient water quality standards. Uh, but that standard is based on a raw human consumption. So unless someone's not going out there and drinking the water, which they're not. Then your other exposure potential is related to. That water. And the contaminants within that water evaporating and coming up into the airspace. And that's where the vapor barrier and the sub-slab depressurization system comes in.
Just one more question on charge of you, but.
Hey, whatever you want to ask, fire it up.
You, you, several times you've said. They didn't, they, they examined it, they determined to do something, they this, they sent the six, not the nine. Um, if they find something. Who is the? Is that normally the contractor? Who does?
So when, when it comes to redeveloping the property and finding something. Um, what their excavation work plan says is they'll have a third-party consultant there. Working with the contractor. And watching as they're digging for the foundation elements. Preparing for, you know, pouring all the concrete. And if they encounter something, here's our list of requirements. You encounter a tank, we have to then. Screen the soil. Uh, pull the tank out, investigate for leaks. And so they, they have a plan in place that says we're going to have this. Contingency process where if we see something. If we encounter something, it will trip a set of steps that will address that in accordance. With the state requirements that get triggered by the fact that they encounter something.
Is there any difference or any particular regulatory or? Practice that takes place professionally? Where the person doing the construction is the property owner, so you know, not so to speak, is the property owner?
So, sometimes the property owner is the redevelop. Uh, sometimes the property owner is doing work, removing a tank, putting on an addition.
Um, so my question though is assuming that it's, it's not a third party, because a third party. Is unrelated, so to speak, other than a contractual obligation to undertake the work.
Right.
But what if you have the owner becoming the developer and handling the construction?
I, I would think that's why they have this excavation work plan and within it. A community air monitoring plan and indicating that a consultant. Would be of, involved. It's basically the, the baseline requirement of the state because. Like I'm, I'm guided by a set of. Um, principles and an environmental license. Um, it would be very similar to a, a PE, a professional engineer license, where even though you're hired by someone. And you're working for your client in their best interest. But you have a legal and moral requirement to. Meet the minimum regulation requirements. Um, and you can't ignore that. And, and I, I, I come into it all the time with our clients where they're like, oh, do we have to dig that tank up? Yet you have to dig it up and you have to dig up all the soil and I have to get clean soil samples and this is just the way it is. And so that's the way their plan is written up. It has that protection level written in. So you can rely on it. To where their consultant, their third-party person with this. Legal and moral obligation and requirement would have to then abide by all the. Those standards that are referred to in the FEIS.
Does the plan require any particular consultant or any particular qualifications or licensing or? Anything or just refers to it as a consultant?
It right now refers to it a consultant. Um. What you can maybe reference. Is that, uh. New York State has a, an ID called a Qualified Environmental Professional. A QEP. And so that could be something that could be established where. Um. You indicate that you're comfortable with a third-party person coming in. That is a QEP. And that QEP. You need a minimum, it's, it's like ten years or so. Of experience, a minimum amount of work and, and it, it basically ties you to that. Legal and moral requirement to do the job that's established.
Where is this plan located? Is it in the DEIS itself in the binder?
Uh, yeah, I, I've seen it. Um. Through the diff- different levels of review that we've completed. Um. You know, the applicant has submitted. Uh, you know, the results of their investigation and then an excavation work plan. Um, and th- those documents that I'm referring to.
That's called the excavation work plan, right?
Yeah, EWP, excavation work.
I believe they were all included as appendices to the DEIS.
Brian, I have a question for you. You keep, kept referring to the, um, brownfield. Uh, to this as a, is this a designated, a recognized brownfield under the state program?
No, no, um, the Brownfield Cleanup Program is actually. Yeah, it's, 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 it's a very lucrative program. And you have to apply to the state. And it's almost hard to get into. Because. When you redevelop a property that is maligned by contamination, so. Typically, it's just sitting there and no one can make any money off of it. And the town is not getting any tax revenue off of it. Because it has this contamination that's. Worth more than the property. But if you go in and keep clean it up, what the state does is they'll say, we'll give you a fifty percent property tax credit. On how you clean it up, or actually twenty-five up to. And then we'll give you a fifty percent credit on your building costs, on your total buildout. And then that way. A property that's sitting there that is maligned and is. Is just. It's one of those typical. Old industrial properties that are just sitting there and a town has no idea what to do with it. This gives. A developer an opportunity to come in and take care of it. And then down the line. The town and the state will start reaping the benefits with, with property tax credits. So, um. This site, no, it's not a brownfield.
Thank you. Does anyone else on the board have any questions, Brian?
Confirming, when you went through the, the, the DEIS, right, the appendices, whichever portion you went through. Was there anything there that? You flagged that arose your concern that, that?
There, there were things that I flagged at several points along the way. And as we went through the comment response process. They slowly. Um. Provided information that addressed those flags. For me, the big thing is exposure. Um. As a consultant of the town. I feel that my job is to make sure that your group. Has the assurance. That the main avenues of exposure are taken care of. So you have. Human health and the environment. And so you have water. With water, what is that exposure potential? Are you drinking it? No, no one's drinking the water there. You can't. Okay, that takes care of that. Can something evaporate out of the water? And this is where I was saying, take soil vapor samples to prove that you don't need a vapor barrier. And one of those sub-slab depressurization systems.
So did they do that?
They decided to add a vapor barrier in a sub-slab depressurization system. Without even knowing if they needed.
Okay, so, but so they've taken care of the problem that if there may not have been a problem, but they haven't, and, and. By putting in the vapor barrier, they have eliminated the problem, even if there isn't one.
Correct. Yeah, imagine that an apple is dangerous. You have to eat the apple. So they put in that mechanism to. Prevent you from eating the apple. Um, so that was a, a big step that I was glad to see. Took a little while, but. Glad to see that they did it, um.
Now, I have a question about vapor barriers and.
Sure.
Vapor barrier and, um, and, and I don't, and it's got to do with. And again, you know, my familiarity is more with New York City, so, um. Where, you know, uh, Department of Buildings reviews it and, and DE, uh, DEC. And you have a plan that you work out with DEC in place there are contaminants. So who verifies that in fact, the vapor barrier has been installed or whatever the right word is? I don't know whether. Is the appropriate verb, but who verifies that the vapor barrier has been put into place as required?
So, a, a consultant will have. A design. So that, that the consultant is going to provide is a design to the developer. That is stamped by a professional engineer. And then typically what happens is. The professional engineer is going to go out once it's installed to confirm that it was installed in accordance. With the plans and the specifications. One thing I think that you guys could do as a town. Is. Uh. Ask that the. Professional engineer certification be forwarded to you. After installation of the vapor barrier and the SSDS to show that those. Measures have been installed in accordance. With the plans and the specifications. And then you'll have your comfort to know that they're in place. And then what's great about a PE is a perf- professional engineer obviously has a very high standard of care as far as. Confirming. That everything is done in accordance with what is required.
Are you familiar at all with?
No other concerns that, that, is any other concerns you might have had or eliminated? Everything else was. You, at this point, you have no. Nothing says this is still a concern.
I'm, I'm good right now and I'll, I'll cover the other parts in that soil. Vapor is covered with a vapor barrier. Water is covered with a vapor barrier because A, you're not drinking it and B, you're. Protecting, protecting against things that can evaporate out of it. Um, and then for soil. That excavation work plan. Has two parts. The plan where they, they direct things onsite. So as we're digging it up. Will test it in accordance with the requirements for A, reuse onsite. Or B. Sending it offsite to a reuse or disposal facility. And then. C, the third part is that community air monitoring plan. That's a part of it where they're going to monitor. On the site, and this is in the responses where they say. They're going to have a community air monitoring plan consistent with the requirements of the New York State Department of Health. Uh. Community air monitoring plans. Where you're measuring for dust. So as you're digging things up. The exposure potential. Is that dust gets generated. The dusk is a small little soil particulate. It flows offsite with the wind. And then you get, you breathe it in. And so they're going to have monitoring stations in place. That measure dust. And also volatiles. And to make sure that they stay below. What our State Department of Health. Considers safe. And if it goes above that, there are triggers. And that's what they talk about in the FEIS where they're going to. Have things available to wet down the soil. If you make it wet, there's no more dust. Um, they could even have foams. So if you have volatiles, you, you would put foam on it. And it makes it where. It's no longer an odor hazard. And so there are measures in place that handle soil, water. And air, so. Basically, all in all. And, and as your consultant, someone's going to give you a, a professional opinion. They have finally come to the point. Where they have measures in place. That address. The exposure potentials for the three environmental media on site, air, water and soil. To the point. Where it meets. At a minimum, the requirements of the state. And so above that, we don't have any legal standing to enforce more. So. And the state requirements are pretty stringent. You meet those and I'm comfortable with it. Um, and so I'd have to say, at this point, the. The, uh, written. And established methods. That they, they, they meet those requirements. And I think the next steps are. When you move into an active phase, more of that hands-on construction phase. Just having those, those steps in place where provide us with the confirmation, provide us with the confirmation that you have met. Your established standards that meet the state requirements.
Question for you, when they, did you look into the construction documents on the existing building there that was built?
I didn't take a, a, a dive into. The specifics of the construction, other than. I think they're going to go like four feet below grade. Maximum for a foundation at this point in time or. Um, I, I knew it, it was at least. Possibly going into the water table where they may have to encounter dewater. And dewatering is a highly regulated thing where. You're going to, you have, first of all, you have to get a, um, a permit, the, the, uh. They call it NIPD's New York. You know, disposal elimination system. Um. And you have to do testing on that and then you have to confirm your discharge point. And so if they have to dewater, there are. Very strict regulations in place to. But guide how they have to.
I guess my question is, you, you've talked about the procedures here and response to the questions posed by the board. You are, are you aware of whether or not they were complied, they were followed in the existing building that was built?
When was these existing building constructed?
I don't know.
In the nineties, late nineties.
Yeah, that, there, there's, there's no way for me to know what was done and. In that timeframe for the existing building and.
What if you, well, what if you went to the?
No.
Been constructed much more recently than that because.
Yeah.
Um, because I was on the board when they constructed it, so I was first on the board in like twenty-ten. So it had to have been constructed after that.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I've, i- it's say it's twenty-ten, say it's twenty-fifteen. Um. No, I, I have no recor- No, I, I have no record. I have no. Awareness of what was done for that. Um. And from an environmental perspective. Um, if that building was constructed without this existing process in place. I don't know what regulatory mechanism would be there to say. You had to do X, Y, or Z. Um. If they did it.
Well, it's now being considered as part of it because it was a segmentation in the board's position, so.
Okay.
I said, but I, my question was, you haven't looked at the plans themselves?
Okay, yeah.
All right.
I would, um, I, I would be, uh. Like if you're, if you're going to say like an existing building has a requirement of A, B, or C. Um. Just be aware that one response might be, what about all the neighboring buildings? Do they have the same requirements?
I don't know. It's not our issue. Our issue is this one. This was the only new one there that was built.
Right. So the, the question is whether or not it has a vapor barrier.
Right. He said that he talked about a retro.
You, you know, something like that because we could, uh, we couldn't pose, uh, putting.
You could say, you could say either, uh, as I just mentioned earlier, A, collect some samples to show that it's not needed. Or B retrofit.
How would you collect samples underneath?
Um, it's a. A very, um, it's pretty simple and straightforward. We do it a lot. Um, there is a process where you go in. And you drill a one inch hole through your concrete slab. And you insert this little screen. And then you seal, that screen is connected to tubing that comes to the surface and you seal that tubing. To the foundation. And then you hook up this laboratory provided canister. It's called a summa canister. It looks like a stainless steel basketball. And it has, it's pressurized and it has this regulator that'll draw in air and you can set it for a one hour sample, a four hour sample. An eight hour sample or a twenty-four hour sample. For these buildings, we typically do eight hours because that's your. Standard work shift, your zone of exposure, so to speak. Um. And you collect a sample that's drawing air from below the slab and not from the breathing space. And so you get a snapshot, a photograph of that air quality. Below the foundation, which is going to tell you what is the potential for something to leak through cracks and come up into the breathing space.
What do you call that test?
Uh, it's a sub slab. Uh, vapor sample collection.
Okay.
So you could indicate. Uh, collect two. Go like north side, south side. How big is this building?
Top of my head, I don't know.
It's like fifty by fifty?
An existing self-storage building, so it's pretty big.
It's significantly bigger.
You could say three samples. Um.
You've seen the building? Have you seen the plans on the building?
I'm just. Recalling, uh. Some layouts. But I don't remember the exact dimensions. Thinking of a, um.
Thirty-eight thousand square feet, four stories.
Is that the whole thing or just this half, I think?
Yeah, it could be the footprint is. Ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So a hundred by a hundred. I just did a hundred by a hundred. I took three samples.
Oh, Ashley, does that, is that including the existing portion as well?
That's, that's just the existing self-storage building. I'm looking at table. One dash one in the F A V S. It gives the gross square feet of the existing self-storage building.
Yeah, the, the, the good thing with a sub slab vapor sample is it's. Even though it's a quantitative sample, it's more of a qualitative measure. Um. Because kind of like an odor in a room. It's not going to focus on one spot. It's going to disperse through whatever's holding it down. Which would be the concrete slab. So if you pick a couple of locations, say three or four. Um. You know, you're going to get an idea if there's a hotspot somewhere. And then what the average concentration is across the floor. Um, and.
Thank you.
That would be. That, that is the act, the, the, the. Basic. Protocol. D E C, D O H, that's what's required to, to say, do you need something? There, do you need a system? Do you need some sort of mitigation?
Right. And to your knowledge, they haven't done that test on the existing building, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. Super. Any board members have any questions on this? Okay. Okay. Charlie. So I think we've got a work cut out for us for the next week.
Yeah, I think, excuse me, and, um, you know, I see that the applicant is listening here tonight, so they'll have an indication of kind of. Uh, what to expect at May. Um, is it the boards, just to confirm, the board would like to hear from the applicant. To answer any questions and go over the F E I S at the May meeting.
I would think they should be there if they want to be there, sure. I'm not sure how, you know, I think the board may have questions and the board may have discussions, but. There doesn't have to be a public hearing on this, but I think they've indicated an intent or desire to do so.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate.
Right. And then Ashley will also go, you'll go over the earlier comments and questions posed, so we can address those before the meeting as well. We're at the meeting.
Okay.
And can I just ask that anything electronically be, I haven't been C C'd on a lot of these emails and items, so if anything electronic came in, so I can post them to the agenda?
Yeah, I, I don't know of any, but.
So Ashley, are you going to be providing us with anything? To, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of.
Yeah, Ashley was going to go through, as I understood, Ashley was going to go and look at the, I guess, was it November, October, November meeting?
Yeah, so we'll go back to those, the minutes and transcripts from those meetings and go through the tape and pull. Uh, a summary list of comments and we'll take a look at the F E I S and see whether or not.
Best is probably look at the video on those. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And just finally, uh, any members of the board, if you have any questions, something pops into your head. Uh, you can email Ashley or myself and we'll be glad to respond. Best weekend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can that be given to us before the weekend?
Ashley, the, the meeting is. Let me just look at the calendar, uh, May fifth, correct?
The meeting will be May fifth, correct?
Should be next week.
Um.
Yeah.
I will try to get it before the weekend. I'll do my best.
Okay. Well, we, we, we can't ask you for more than that. Thank you. All right. Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll go on to some of the old business and. It's nine, eight fifty-five and see if in the next twenty-five minutes, we can move ahead with that, unless there's anything someone has with us. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Brian and I are going to drop off, so.
Okay, have a good evening and thank you very much. Appreciate it. You're very helpful. Okay. Okay, um. We have a few. Closed applications. Let's see if we can get the two or three of them that are. Been with us for a while. Um. One is on, uh, first one is three ninety-seven Palmer, and that's. August, there's no number on that. Okay. That's the application of Shannon Richan, Inc. Um. We had discussed this the last time. It was a circulated resolution, I believe, or one that was, and then. I, there was some red line version that was sent out today on that, I believe, to some of you, to all of you. Um.
Charlie, did we get the final one? Because I don't see it.
I believe Dave circulated it around ten or eleven o'clock today.
Maybe.
Okay, that's the one with the red line.
That is the one with the red line.
Who did the red line? Who's commented with the red line?
Those were mine. Uh, Charlie wrote it, and then I think, weren't they, Charlie? I don't know, maybe yours was some of them?
Nope, they were yours.
All right, thank you. I've been thrown under the bus before.
And a lot of them are not substantive, but, 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 um. But, um, but I have a lot of comments on it. So, um. So I started by checking the village code about something. So office building is defined in the village code. As a, uh, building occupied or used for business or professional offices. Now. Profession and professional are not defined in the village code. And I actually, it's still a little work, right? There's no definition of the code. You look to the plain meaning. So I went and checked the dictionary and. Um, so I have to get my dictionary. I actually have a dictionary. Um, so, uh, my dictionary says that. Profession. I was just reading this to you. I don't really have a contact. Professional is concerned or occupied with the. Training of professionals. Um, and under the definition of profession, it is calling requiring specialized knowledge and often long and intensive. Preparation, including instruction and skills and methods as well as in the scientific historical or scholarly principles. I'm not sure that. A massage parlor is a profession, but I don't know. Um, so I don't know what makes it because I, I think, given that an office building. Um, you know, profi-, I don't know whether it is or isn't. So that's just something I raise as to whether or not. This is actually a profession. Um, because if, if massage establishments are professions. That, and I understand we have them all over the village. That doesn't mean that it's a professional building. If it's an office building, they probably could be there. Um, but if it says professional building, I'm not sure that massage establishment is a profession. And. So that's something I raise and I real, I haven't really focused on it, but I started wondering.
Well, Robin, listen, my thoughts on that are you cannot have a massage establishment without a licensed. Professional. Masseuse or somebody who's licensed by the state under Article Eight.
Right.
Uh, so I think that in order to be licensed, there's licensing requirements which probably meet the description of a professional. Since it is. Quote unquote, a professional license by the state. So, uh, I, I do think it falls under, um. Under that guideline, uh, you know. Regardless of what it is, uh, you have to meet a, a, a certain standards and education and, and. Probably other licensing requirements to get this, uh, professional license and to maintain it. And then again, you know, massage establishment has to be run by, by somebody. So I, I do think that it fits within. Uh, profession. I'm not sure why we edited out, um. Why we changed office building, professional building to office building.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh. The, 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 the history of this building was, and, and Robin, I think you might remember the, the best. Because you went through it at the last meeting that, uh, it was. The C of O is for professional building, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, so I don't, I don't know about. Just putting office building. I mean, Dave, can you speak to, to that?
Well. Well, no, I don't, the, the code also, I mean, our code is Charlie has often commented needs a little work. But non-residential district regulations are, I have three forty-two, twenty-nine. And they talked about, and that I believe they talked about what is an office building and it, um. See what I can find here. I just was looking at that.
But does it really matter, Dave? Because it has a C of O and the C of O is what establishes the non-conforming use. So since the C of O is for a professional building, that is the non-conforming use.
Isn't there, is there such, is there such a, a, we see, if you look at office district. It, it basically, it says to you that permitted accessory is, uses the, um. It talks about what uses are permitted and it says a permitted principal use. In the office district and it includes executive administrative, business, professional and general offices. I don't know, to me, is there something that says if you're called the professional office building, that's not what you can have? Because that's the only office district provision that I'm aware of.
I'm not sure that that's relevant. This isn't an office district. The fact that our office district allows only certain uses. This isn't in an office district. This is a pre-existing, right? They have a C of O. Assuming it was legally issued and, right, we're not, we're not invested going back. We assume it's legally issued. Assuming it was legally issued, then it, a professional building is the non-conforming use. Whether it's allowed anywhere else in the village doesn't matter because presumably at some point it was allowed here.
Well, the only question I'm posing is that before nineteen, whatever this nine, two thousand and ten or maybe nineteen seventy-nine. I've not found any reference anywhere to office, professional office buildings as a use. It is a, it, it is now called. And it's all now controlled by non-residential and it's called office district. So it says the following are the only used permit in an office districts, in districts. So I think they've now. I don't know. So maybe they called that a professional building at one point. I don't even think we have such a thing anymore. I've just ran the word professional and then it doesn't pick it up and it's on a search code. It's a search code.
But I don't think that's right. The fact that it isn't. Assuming, we have to assume that the C of O was legally issued. Therefore, it is a legal use. And if it is a legal use, since the C of O is for professional building, the legal use is for a professional building.
And I, and I have it up right now. It says in December ninth, nineteen fifty-eight.
Ah, okay.
Certificate is issued. Uh, is professional building. Occupancy for which this certificate is issued is professional building. So that's the non-conforming use. The massage establishment is a professional establishment according to what, what our thought process is, so.
I agree.
Why start, why start bringing in office to this?
Uh, that's fine. So you want to just, oh, so the pre-existing. Oh, professional building. So, okay, that's, you're right. I think that's fine.
But it should be called. It should be called an office building because. That's how it's defined in the code, code now.
Code is irrelevant because this was established in nineteen fifty-eight and in nineteen fifty-eight, it got a C of O for professional building. So presumably. In nineteen fifty-eight, the code allowed professional buildings. Or maybe in nineteen fifty-eight, the custom was. That office buildings weren't just given a C of O for office buildings, but the particular uses in the building. In this case, what they had were professions. Um, in the building as opposed to, right, offices or administrative or other things. It wasn't for administrative uses. It was for professional uses.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't think it matters much because I think it's, I, I, I'm with Brian and I think it's. You got a licensed professional, you got a professional license with the requirements issued by state ed department.
So that means that a hairdresser and a nail, um, and a, a hairdresser who also gets a. License from the state is also a professional. So if they had a hair salon in this building. It would be a professional that would, under this theory, and that's why I have some trouble, I'm troubled by it. A nail, a hair salon in this building, notwithstanding everything else about a hair salon, and I realize they're not necessarily the same thing. But that would mean, based on that theory, a hair salon is a profession because you get a license from the state. So, um, uh, you know, it troubles me that we call this a, a thing. Okay, but going on to the, the next paragraph that talks about. Including doctors' offices and similar massage establishments. What are similar massage establishments?
I, I had trouble with that anyway because the truth of the matter is that, uh. The establishment that was in there before. Was not permitted.
It was illegal. Yeah.
So I, I, I had, I had a problem with that. Uh, because it, it did not exist appropriately. Um. You know, it's a perfect, you know, they needed, they needed to get a permit. They didn't get a permit. This person is getting a permit, so I don't think it's going to have any effect. I just don't think that historically we ought to be putting something in there. Um.
I, I, yeah.
Just half the story.
And I, I agree with you. The only thing is I, I don't think we have the.
You should take that out because there's no evidence there was ever a massage establishment, a legal.
Charlie?
Agreed, agreed.
Yep.
No, you put, you put that in, all right. I mean, yeah, my only, my only issue is I would not put in unlawful because I don't know that I'm not about to. No, you put, you put that in. All right. I mean, yeah, my only, my only issue is I would not put in unlawful because I don't know that I'm not about to characterize anything.
No, just take it out.
Charlie, is that's all right with you? You put that in? Fine.
Yep, I got it.
Okay. And including doctors' offices. You want, you have been occupied various, you want to just put the period after offices, various professional offices, period?
That seems fine.
I think that's, that avoids the whole day. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Now going to the next paragraph, just, I think it would be clear, whereas the premises on the professional building are within the R two F zoning district, but is permitted to remain. That, that just doesn't read right. And the fact that it's within an R two F residential zoning district says nothing about whether it's a permitted use or not. So I think it needs to say are within the R two F residential zoning district where office use, where professional buildings are not permitted, um, but the professional building is permitted to remain. Cause otherwise you have, now we have the season too, but is permitted to remain. And, um, uh, you have to indicate why it's not, it's why, why that's relevant that it's in an R two F district.
I mean, Charlie, do you have this?
Yep, I got it.
You're working on this? Okay, you can do it. Okay.
Yep.
I don't have a problem.
If anybody else has comments before I get to my next one here, you should, let's just do this all in one fell swoop. My next comment isn't until the next page, whereas the proposed massage establishment is my next comment. So, um, Brett or Brian, if you have something before that.
I don't have anything before that. No.
Okay. So then my next comment is on, um, whereas the proposed massage establishment you have is a professional use, especially considering their licensing. It seems that what board members seem to be saying that I'm, I'm, you know, wasn't quite clear if I agree with, but is that the proposed massage establishment is a professional use based on their licensing from the state. That's what you're saying. That's the only basis for considering it a professional use. So I think it should be clear that's what it is.
What, what line, on what page you, and I'm sorry?
On page two of the red line, whereas the proposed massage establishment is a professional use, especially considering. Since the, what the board seems to be saying is that because they have a license from the state, that makes it a profession. It should say, whereas the proposed massage establishment is a profession, given that they are licensed from the state. And as I say, this raises a whole big issue to me because you could get a hair salon in this building. Which would have significantly different impacts on the neighborhood and, uh, different traffic and all kinds of other things. And I don't think that would be a profession. So I'm concerned about this, um, use, but that's, you know, my view of it, you may not agree. And that's fine.
Can you, I'm, I'm sorry, Robin, I was having trouble hearing. I, I'm hoping I can check. I've, um, can you just summer? I'm so sorry. Can you just?
Basically, I was, I was, a language would bother me. The massage establishment is a professional use, especially considering their licensing. So what I'm saying is based on is what like Brian just was talking about and Dave was just talking about. It is a profession because it has a license.
Yeah.
Especially considering, so it should say is a professional use because it has a license from the state. And my concern with that, right? So if you, especially considering, I don't know why it's, uh, my concern is that by saying a license from the state gives you a, makes you a profession, means that a hair salon.
Yeah, it's very broad.
I think hair salons are, um, I, I don't know.
You don't have to go, you don't need that.
Negative impacts essentially. I have real concerns with that. So I don't know that I want to say that. I would want to say, so that's my, um, problem with this.
How would, how would you want to say it, Robin?
I, I don't know that I want to say it, but my point is I raised that with you, um.
Yeah. What happened was in the last meeting, we were trying to decide whether or not this use is consistent with the building. And, uh, what happened was in discussion with you, um, we determined and you went back and saw that the original building was, uh, permitted as a, the CFO was for a professional building. So that's when we went through the whole analysis of, well, you know, this person is a licensed professional. This establishment cannot exist u- u- unless, you know, it's run by a licensed professional. Uh, and it seemed to, to fit. Um, you know, now we're kind of parsing out the different types of licenses and whether or not someone who's a licensed dentist should be more appropriate to work in the building than a licensed beautician. Uh, I don't know the code well enough off the top of my head, uh, to know whether or not there's things in our code which give further restrictions on, on beauticians or beauty parlors. Uh, what I do know is that we've got these massage establishments in other office buildings, uh, uh, you know, and actually the one that I referenced, which was, um, Brittany reminded me what street it was on, but literally you have a, uh, a, a beauty parlor or, or a hairdresser uh, in the same building as, you know, uh, as somebody providing massage, uh, therapy or, or massage establishment, uh, along with other offices.
Right. The problem, I, I, oh, oh, massage establishments are appropriate in the village. I'm not disagreeing with that. That isn't my concern. My concern is we're saying they're a profession, right? Because this is a professional.
You want to take that out, right?
So, so I just wanted to explain to you whether, just so you get some sense of why I have this concern with, with talking about it has a license. So it's a profession. Um, if anybody that has a license from the state, uh, aquatic anti-fouling paint applicators get a license from the state. Um, asbestos handlers get a license from the state. I don't think putting any of those in this building would be consistent with a, what I think of as a professional building. Um, a clinical laboratory technology, right? All, I don't know whether that is, but maybe it is, but there's, the, the state licenses so many different uses, and I don't think it makes them, um, funeral directors are certainly professionals. I don't think the mere fact that you have a license from the state makes you a, um, the only way I would say, and, and so the question is, is, is the village now saying that the, uh, that a massage establishment is a profession? And if so, we're either saying it because there's something about massage establishments that make it a profession. And maybe there is in which case I think somebody needs to come up with that. Or we're saying because the village has previously recognized licensed, uh, massage establishments as professions. And maybe it has, maybe it hasn't, but that to me is the concern. And it isn't necessarily a concern about a massage establishment per se. It's concerning about what precedent we're establishing for what this use means. I don't know how many professional buildings there are in the village. I don't know if this is the only one, but there are lots of buildings that have a CFO for professional, uh, as professional buildings, but this is my concern and may not be anyone else's concern, but it is my concern.
You want to just say that the proposed massage establishment is a professional use? I mean, take out that especially considering?
Well, you have taken the especially considering doesn't make sense because
Yeah.
it is or isn't. I mean, so if we're making a conclusion that a massage establishment is a professional use, like we, we could do that. We could do that.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I have other issues that are before that. Um.
You have issues before that, Greg. You should.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We, we were going to go through this in a, a term unless you want, Robin, you want to fly through yours and.
I wasn't going to. I was trying to do it sequentially.
No, I know.
You were going so fast and I was trying to listen to you and then I had notes that I.
Robert, how many more do you have? You have a lot more?
Um, hold on. No, I just have a couple more.
So why don't you just do, tell me those and I can, I'm just.
The, then the next page again of the red line. Whereas the applicant, and sorry, this is pure English. It says neither proposes, you can't have neither with more than two. So it does not propose to make, alter or extend. Sorry, that's, they say purely English.
Okay. Where, where is that? Can you just tell me where, where, which, whereas?
Top of page three.
Page three.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, considering that, yeah.
So again, it's just, that's just grammar, just grammar. Whereas the applicant does not propose to make or extend the professional building or the uses within, or the profession of the uses within. Because expansion of you, if you have a building and you're expanding within, I'm not sure how that works, but.
I think that that's a different thing because the code doesn't deal with that. There, there's a couple of court of appeals cases that do, Syracuse aggregate and the other one, but the code talks about the alteration, talks about the expansion of the building.
Okay. So it may be the other.
Why does it say that? That was one of my issues. It, the code doesn't talk about the expansion of the building. It talks about the use, you crossed off the part of the col- code. And then you put in something that wasn't part of the code. That, that is my question.
Here's the issue, David, and this is why this is a non-conforming use. It is not a non-conforming building. You cannot expand a non-conforming use within a building where you have a non-conforming building. You, because the building doesn't, right? Like all of these, like the.
I don't know.
Right. Like the flagler, the flagler property is a non-conforming building. The bill, the use is permitted, but the building itself is non-conforming with respect to yard requirements. Here we have a use requirement, a use issue. The building may conform with all yard and other requirements in this district. But it's the use of building, the professional use of the building that is non-conforming. This is a non-conforming use. You can't expand a non-conforming use within a building.
Okay, absolutely agree. Totally.
Wait, can you give me the, where, where in the code are we talking about this? I'm sorry. It says you can't change it to another.
It's where you crossed off sixty-four B. It was, the red line was crossed off.
A non-conforming use of a building shall not be changed to another non-conforming use. Oh, okay. It doesn't say enlarge. It just can't be changed because enlarge.
Not it. Hold on. I'll find it for you, David. I don't have it.
Fine.
You have to give me a minute to get to the village.
Well, that, that should be verbatim. That red line should be verbatim from what the code is.
I'm not sure. That's why I'm going there to find it. Um. What, where are you?
But that, that's not the side.
Two, on page two, this red line crossed off something which is sixty-four B, which is, I'm checking to make sure it's verbatim.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking to also to get to, um.
Yeah, the missing, it, it's sixty-four B reads that way. I have it in front of me. But you see, it's the non-conforming use. It doesn't say it can't be enlarged. It just says it can't be changed to another non-conforming.
No, the, um.
I'm, I'm looking at it, but go ahead. I'll read it for you if it says what it says.
Less non-conform, after, that will be to a less non-conforming use.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, you're, you're changing that word to enlarge. The, the enlargement's a different section that talks about alteration, which is defined as structural change.
But that's not really relevant here as.
Well, it is in the sense that I don't, I think if, when the situation does not conform the use regulations, okay. May grant, okay, so it's.
A building, okay.
See, shall not be enlarged, altered or extended. That's the building and A deals with the structure.
Uh, notwithstanding the above, the Board of Appeals, after public notice and hearing, may grant a special permit to allow a non-conforming use to be extended throughout those parts of a building, which were manifestly arranged or designed for such use prior to the time of enactment of this chapter. That may, so although the code is poorly drafted, because we all know that the code is horribly drafted. Um, the, that clearly implies that if you have a building, so we have, we, if you have a building and a portion of the building has a non-conforming use, you cannot take a non-conforming use and extend it through the building. Unless you get a special permit. And so here, the question is that this is a non-conforming use. Are they extending it in the building? Or if it's just a profession, maybe they're not extending it because they're just changing from profession A to profession B. But you can't, but this clearly says you can't extend within a building, a non-conforming use, not the building itself, but the use within a building.
Right. But we've, but we've had this discussion before and, and what we've, uh, come down to is the fact that this building wholly, uh, was, had a CFO as a professional building and has been continuously occupied as a professional building. Um, whether or not one floor has been in continuous use or not, uh, i- i- it hasn't been changed or altered. So therefore the entire building, um, is capable of having a professional office, uh, uh, within it because we've never changed any use. It's not as if, um, you know, there was an addition to the building. Uh, and then we pushed more, y- you know, more offices and more professional, uh, uh, offices in there. Or there was any other kind of alteration or, um, or one part of the building became non-conforming for some reason. It was, it was never the case. Uh, and we've, we've had that, we've had that discussion before where we basically said, we're not, we're not expanding any use of this building. The entire building was a professional building and always has been a professional building. And just because, uh, you know, they may not, they may have had a vacancy in part of the building for a little time that doesn't decertify it as, uh, as a space where a professional office could be. So I, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the purpose, the, the non-conforming use here is the non-residential use. Right? Use as an office.
Non-conforming use is the specific use professional, uh, you office.
But any, right, in the professional office, right?
Right. Non-conforming use is, is what it is certified for.
I may just add, because Dave, you mentioned the Saratoga aggregates case.
Yeah.
So a short period of my experience in sand and gravel mining. And a lot of those cases follow that, um, if a sand and gravel, gravel mining operator is going to mine new area of a property, that is not an expansion of a non-conforming use because that entire property was intended for mining.
Yes, with one qualification, you're completely right. But what's more so even is they, they hold it, you can only do, that's if it wasn't used for quarry, it still can be. In this case, in this case, the building is the building. It's already here. So if you had the quarry that was the entire, but that was the quarry case, up against the circus aggregate case, right? And that's the case where they held, somebody said, listen, I'd love to have my quarry here. And they said, fine. So now I'm going to close this one up and I'm going to go eighth of a mile down the way to my other, to my property and do it there. And the court said it's intrinsic to the property. You look at the overall use.
You know, you can't, uh, the courts are very clear in New York with respect to ag, um, with respect to, um, sand and gravel uses. It is a completely different principle and there are numerous cases to talk about it. Because the difference with the sand and gravel cases is that, um, with, with respect to the sand and gravel use gravel. When, once you've quarried out the piece of land on which the gravel was taken, you can't use it again. It's done. As opposed to the use of a, let's say a professional building, which can be continued forever. So the board has, the, the courts have made very, there's even a term, which I, a term of art, which I can't think of what it's called. But there's a particular.
Well, they did too. They, there were two decisions, Robin. There was the, the, and then there was Wesley wrote one this ninth, in this, the following year and, and put the other side on it where he said, okay, now you're going too far, but it's, all right. I'm not sure where we're going this. Okay, but.
To that. So it's not, I don't think it's relevant at all. I don't think.
I don't think so either. Okay. You want to step that back in, that, that part of the code?
Sixty-four B?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, there's no reason why not to.
There's no reason why. You got it.
And I, I don't think we need the, the addition about the building. I don't think that's, that's really, um, that was on the top of page two. I don't think that's really relevant.
That it says that you can permit the non-conforming use to continue? I think that's very relevant.
Yeah, I mean, other, otherwise.
Otherwise, what do we?
Be a basis for putting.
Can you be more specific on what your, what code you're citing? We, we're in Article nine. Let's be more specific.
I think it's a summary of the quotations that are just below sixty-four A and sixty-four B.
It's also the nonconforming use of, the use of land. It's in the.
I mean, it's, it's, it's literally the first thing.
Sixty-two, it's, it's the whole.
Three forty-two, sixty-two, it says lawfully permitted use of land existing at the time of the adoption of the chapter may be continued.
Said use shall be deemed nonconforming use, yeah, I don't, I don't care if it's in or out.
Well, we just cite sixty-two verbatim, why, you know, why are we?
I agree with you, Greta. There, there's no reason why not to just use that, that first little paragraph, three forty-two, sixty-two. That is the basis.
Well, is it, I, it, it's really, well, it's, the basis is really, that talks about when the code was enacted, right?
It talks about the particular section. At some point, this became a residential district. Either it became a residential district after nineteen.
Right, so then it became sixty-three is really what allowed that to stay, right, Charlie? Because sixty-two.
So that's for when no building is involved, sixty-three is where.
I'm sorry, sixty-four then is what I meant. Because that's the nonconforming use that can continue. Sixty-two says at the count of the adoption, you want to put that in? I don't care.
Forty-two, sixty-two says continuation of existing uses. The lawfully permitted use of land or buildings existing at the time of this chapter may be continued. Although, obviously, this is not relevant because it's not just the chapter. It's really, it should be any applicable code, this doesn't, this actually doesn't deal with.
Yeah, it doesn't deal with it.
Which would argue that, which would argue that you can't do that. But we don't, the board has never interpreted that, because if you were legal at the time you were created and then a subsequent amendment was adopted. And the only provision that allows for continuation of any use is three forty-two, sixty-two. So even though it isn't.
No, sixty-four does, doesn't it?
No.
No, sixty-two defines what a nonconforming use is.
And we have not.
So where do you want to put, where do you want to put that in, if you want?
Switch that with the first paragraph of page two. Way Greta said.
Yep. Um, what I was talking about before, it's called the, the, the rule applicable to quarries that now remembered is the diminishing asset doctrine, which is a slight variation on how you interpret vested rights and nonconforming conditions for quarries. And it only applies to.
Yeah, but that's got to be agreed upon under Con versus Irvington. That's only, that's if the town does it, the town has the right to do that, the village. In this case, they don't. That's the point, you're, the amortization concept is what you're talking about, from Toys R Us.
Amortization at all, I'm talking, the diminishing asset doctrine, which, let's not get into it.
Okay, fine, I'll go along with that.
If we're going to have that conversation, we should do it over drinks, not on Zoom. I'd, I'd love to have that conversation.
It's okay with me.
It's very interesting.
I'm having that fight in another municipality where I represent the applicant, far away from here, but I'm up to speed.
So that's section three, what am I, what's that code section we just took?
Three forty-two, sixty-two.
I have it in, I put it in already.
Oh, fantastic, wonderful.
Cut, cut and paste.
Okay, what's, anything else, Greta, sorry, before, let's get moving on?
The only thing I was going to say, this is the bottom of, of page one, the last line, you know, although the premises are located within residential district, commercial uses are located directly across Palmer Avenue. I don't think that makes a difference. This is a preexisting use in this spot, whether there are commercial uses or not, whether.
I agree, we should take that out, I agree with you, Greta, I saw that.
It's superfluous.
Right, it should come out, that's the comment about commercial uses are, so maybe the whole paragraph should come out, because otherwise it doesn't add anything.
Yeah.
Where's that, Charlie, where'd you put that?
It's the, of the one I'm looking at now, it's the first paragraph at the top of page two. Whereas although the premises and the professional building thereon are located within a residential district.
Okay.
Uses are located directly across the street.
Yeah, but I saw that meant to come back to it and then.
I also think, Charlie, if you go through the document, it should be consistent. There are some places where it, it mentions office building. Just make sure that if we're, you know, it's a professional building that we maintain professional buildings throughout the entire document.
Okay.
I think.
That was the fourth whereas clause, is that correct? I'm just.
In, in the original document, it was the last whereas clause on the first page, on the document you may be looking.
Yeah, the fourth, the one that says whereas the premises of the professional building located within our.
No, it's the, one, two, three, four.
Last paragraph on page one.
Original document.
It's the ninth whereas clause.
Thank you. Oh, whereas although it's within a residential district, right? Although the professional building is located within a residential district?
Yeah.
Okay, that's how, okay, fine, I just want to track it with them. Anything else?
Um, the, the third paragraph or the paragraph that goes whereas by correspondence, applicant demonstrated, I don't think they demonstrated that they have reviewed the special permit requirements. They said they have reviewed, they didn't give us evidence, I mean, we don't know that they've reviewed them. They may not have read them, they just said they did. They did, um, they did that, and they did provide the licensing requirement and they have represented, they will continue to apply. But I don't know that they demonstrated that they have reviewed it, the special.
About represented instead of demonstrated?
Yes, represented, it's fine.
Charlie, is that all right?
Yep, got it in there.
We want to add something. Dennis said, um, represented to us that the building was in continuous use for more than six months. Do we want to add that as a whereas clause to show that that condition has been satisfied?
I don't think it's necessarily going to be, you're proving the negative, I mean, it's.
The building was emptied for six months at some point, I mean.
No, he, no, he represented that the, the building has had a continuous, that had, had, the building has been occupied with professional services for a continuous period of more than six months. And that's one of the conditions, I think sixty-four C. So, but, so he indicated that that.
And that's a condition that would otherwise have to empty the building, I guess, so put it in. I don't care. Brian, Charlie, what is it, Robin?
Well, it's fine, I mean, we, we said that.
Six months somewhere, which I don't see now.
Since three forty-two, sixty.
Three forty-three C talks about ninety days, which is not the six months, which is, I thought the village.
Well, I, I, I actually think what, what Dennis had, had represented was there has always been a professional tenant in the building since nineteen fifty-eight.
Or put another way, there's no evidence that it hasn't been.
Well, he made, he made no, I asked the question and he said affirmatively, now, of course, we, we should have used, that wasn't exactly the best evidence, because you don't know what his basis was. But he did posit that it was continuous, it's been continuous use.
Yeah.
Right, which is what qualifies the building to maintain its nonconforming status.
Right, so I think that's kind of important.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, I'll add it.
Charlie, just under the, item B of be it further resolved. Or should we also say that the special permit shall terminate upon any change of ownership?
So we can't, land use runs with the land, not the owner.
Okay.
So the special permit, if another massage establishment comes in, this special permit would still be valid.
Wouldn't they have to actually?
Yeah.
Buy the business? The, the actual, like, let's say there's an LLC?
Oh.
That's set up?
No, villages can only regulate the use of land through zoning, so they have no control over who the applicant is.
Okay.
Brian, just remember, if Burger King, we, we, we has a nonconforming Burger King and Burger King leaves and McDonald's comes in or Wendy's comes in and they operate the same hours and with the same drive-through and all that, you can't make them get a different special permit, right? That's what you think of just, is it, is it, it's the same use with a different, completely different entity, right? Different uniforms, Burger King and McDonald's nevertheless.
No, I, I understand, I just thought that when we were talking with Toyota City in that parcel that we gave the special permit to, that, that, in fact, I thought that would change of ownership, they would have to come back for another.
I think we can put that in, we've been putting it in the others.
No, we took it out, we've no longer put it in, David, we used to put it in.
Okay.
It's, listen, it's, it's fine with me, it was a question. It was a question.
The reason we did it on the, as I recall, the reason I think we did it on those Toyota was because there was an issue of the fact that you had three different uses that were arguably.
Yeah. That's right, we made them so they could stand alone.
So if.
Charlie, when you get a chance, if you could just share your sights on that thing that says they can't.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, anything else on this?
I, I have something really picky on, but I might as well say that paragraph that had been whereby cars, so I guess it's on page, oh, page three. Whereas by correspondence stated January fifth, but the applicant demonstrated blah, blah, blah. And then at the very end, have represented that they will continue to comply with said requirements. I don't know if you can represent that you will do something in the future, because it's the future. I think you can represent that you understand it's your obligation.
Represented, they, they have to maintain this as a condition.
Yeah, but if you understand that it's your, oh, you're saying this is a condition?
It's a special use permit requirement, so I can say they have represented that they will, or that they understand that they are required to comply.
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, that's, that's in the code.
Right.
That's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
Are we all set? Anyone else say, any comments? Is there a motion on this? I'll move it. We're another, it's going to get resolved.
We, we said ten to eight.
Ten to eight, six days a week.
They get to choose the days. All right, well, I'll second it.
Robin?
So you, wait, just, Dave, you made a motion to approve as amended by today's discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry if that, forgive me if that wasn't clear, and you're right, it probably wasn't clear. I'm making a motion to approve the resolution we've been going through with inclusion of all modifications made throughout the discussions that we've been having and which Charlie has copiously written down all everything about and modify them on a computer nonetheless. And I try to also make them at the same time. So yes, all right, Robin?
Yes.
Okay, Greta?
Yeah.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes, okay. As one more matter I was hoping to get to, but given now, I don't know, unless, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But we did get on Frank and Nina Cooper, which has been on several times. We got, we had closed that subject receipt of something and we have an April twenty-one letter which went over the calculations on, they removed the screen walls, the privacy walls, and then did the calculations on that. Or want to proceed and discuss this to vote on or to get a draft resolution on?
I think that's going to be a long discussion.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to get this, get one done, let's do one of the simpler ones, David, so we can get one of the.
But the problem you're going to have is not to bother everybody with this. I guess we'll do the next one, because May is going to be a full meeting. So let's see. Twelve sixty will be a long one, all righty, how about? I've got here the next one, one moment, I'm sorry. Yeah, two thirteen, Holstein.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty cut and dry.
Oh, yeah, we got, Ron. We got that, I, I checked the Department of State records also, and we got the, the last special permit, which was three special permit. Let's see, did you all get a copy of that? It was in October seven, two thousand and ten. Do we have the hours on this that they wanted?
The request is for Monday through Sunday, eleven AM to eleven PM.
What was the prior one?
It's like twelve PM to eleven, eleven PM.
Twelve to eleven, Monday through Thursday, and twelve to twelve on Friday and Saturday.
Right, so this is less.
Yeah. Any discussion or emotion on this?
Yeah, they're, they're not having outdoor music, they're, they're not changing anything.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve with all of the same, with the same, since they're not making any changes, right, it's going into the exact same space as the prior. Basically, I make a motion to approve, consistent with all the conditions in the prior special permits. And, you know.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll second it, it is, I don't, I don't know if I completely heard Robin, but we just have to.
Okay, she said consistent with the, go ahead, Robin, you want to repeat that?
No, 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 I, I just, I'm saying amend the hours.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
The new hours, sorry.
Yeah.
You're right, Brian, with the new hours.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I would, I would second that, consistent with the, the prior application and, and amending the hours.
Okay, um, and there's a second, all right, and Greta?
Yes.
Uh, Robin? Your speaker's off, Robin, say something. Just wave your hand, I can't hear you. Just wave your hand, I can't hear you, but. Yes, got it, okay. Brian, you can, you can do sign language, or yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, now it's approved. It's nine forty-seven, we have, and we can do Sylvan, I guess, next time.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I think Sylvan might be fairly quick, uh.
This is the area variance for the one-story addition. Just look at my notes from the last meeting, please. Yeah, we should get rid of another. Sylvan was closed. Oh, okay, yeah, I haven't read his name here, but I see why, okay. Greta, you have any comments on this one? I think you've looked at this one.
Yeah, I I can't find my notes, but what I recall, what I recall is, um. You know, what I did with my, was my, my notes for that, but what what I recall is, um. What I felt was important was the, the fact that the the property was, um. You know, unusual. And that, you know, it was really, and I don't know what the amount was, but I had asked, a really small amount was actually. Added, um, non-conform amount, it was just a really puny amount, and then it was, um. Just a point, you know, it's just a point, I mean, so it was minimal, it was really insubstantial, but I'm not.
And not only that, it it really was not gonna be able to be seen.
Right.
From from the street or or a neighbor's property.
Okay.
There was, you know, we do have some numbers that, you know, really show how insubstantial it was.
Right, and and if I remember correctly, my only comment on that, you know, which I would think if we're going to approve it. Should be added to a resolution to make sure that they get a tree permit to to remove the, the tree.
Well, I think all all, everything we do is subject to all other.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd rather not signal them out, because then you have to do it with everyone, it's.
Okay, okay.
Does the board want to direct me to prepare a resolution for next week on this one?
I I think you can, do we really need to see it before you vote, or are you comfortable voting on this one?
I I like to have resolutions that we vote on. I don't wanna, I'd rather have resolutions.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, you know, there there are some very specific things on why this was really. Pretty, um, uncontroversial, so we should be specificus to that.
Why don't you draft this for next week, circulate it if you would, please, so we have it?
Yeah.
All right, um.
Will two thirteen Halsted, will that resolution have to be reviewed as well in the next meeting?
That one's pretty cut and dry, I think, I'll wrap it up consistent and send it to Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Two thirteen Halsted, we voted, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, um, now the next meeting. We have a few public hearings, and I guess then we're gonna take about. I guess we'll probably on the FEIS, that that meeting will probably take about an hour and a quarter, an hour and a half, I guess, hour and a half. I'm gonna try, I mean, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I I, the idea of limiting, and we're setting time periods becomes.
I don't think we can set time periods. I don't think we can tell, um, I I don't. How, what, what are we gonna set a time period? We can only discuss it for a certain amount of time? I don't want to have limit us how long we can discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, because if a new, i- if a new issue, you know, or or.
Oh, obviously.
Comes up.
We could do targets, we could do targets.
I think you should have a set time, and then if it if it's necessary, and there's reasons to go beyond, but. I mean, the targets are target, whatever you want. I think what we can do is then just adjourn people out, because I think we have to start, I would do the hearings before I did the FEIS.
Yeah, that was a question on what order we're going in.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's why I'm. Charlie?
There was one matter, just so you know, Brittany and I talked earlier today that is seeking an adjournment to the June meeting. I forgot.
Uh, it's seven, my Mariner Beach Inn, yeah, seven hundred South Barry, I received the memo late today, so I'll circulate that, um. Yeah, early advice that we have to post that and just adjourn it since the public hearing was open, uh, waiting on more items.
Yes, we did get some items.
Yeah, we got other items.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that's gonna be on there, but that won't actually be an open public hearing, that'll just be a matter of adjourning it. But we will have some other public hearings, um, and twelve sixty Flagler, obviously, so.
Well, they they want an adjournment?
Yes, they want the adjournment till June second.
Charlie, is there any reason we can't adjourn now? That one, it has to be on the calendar for that day?
I would keep it on the agenda for next Thursday, so the public knows it's to a date certain.
Okay. Okay. So I think what we try to do next week is, um. I think Flagler. Out there, we have another. What else is out there? Wasn't there something else that we closed that was a survey issue?
That will, that is a public hearing.
Yeah, um, well, wait, can you want it, I don't know that we could discuss it, cuz that wasn't on the agenda. But she says a survey would cost several thousand dollars, and we don't need a new survey, we only usually just need an update to the survey.
Yeah.
It should cost a lot less money.
That's about the same, that's, it's about the same price, if to to get an updated survey is, that's exactly what she meant by that. I spoke to her. It's pretty relative in pricing.
What, what, what's the pricing on that? I, back in the day, it used to be like eight hundred.
Yeah, it's a thousand and upwards.
Okay.
But I believe that was a public hearing, so I didn't put it on for this one, so.
Okay. All right, what we're doing, I mean, that was a close one, if I recall, you, Ryan, you were there and that you saw that property and you gotta.
Listen, I I was there, and, uh, unfortunately, the current survey. Did not show a distance between the property line and the house in the rear of the property. I didn't, I didn't see a line on it, so I physically went and I measured, um. You know, so I I could orient myself to see where this thing would go and how far it would be from the neighbor's house, but. Uh.
Brittany, you ask if she could ask the surveyor just for that, for that one side dimension?
Yeah, we could.
That one side dimension, I think.
That'd be right, Robin.
Well, I mean, I I, you know, this this goes to a bigger question.
Yep.
Is, if we're gonna let this person not provide an updated survey. Which has been, you know, so a few years ago, we specifically started requiring that it had to be within one year, cuz we're getting. We had no evidence that nothing new was added. We had, you know, the applicants were all saying. I didn't do anything, but. But, you know, I didn't do anything, but who knows? So, um, we either relying on the applicant, in which case. We shouldn't be, we're requiring new surveys from anyone, or we should be requiring, and I'm sorry, but, you know, and and it's a problem, and we should.
Yeah.
I I agree, I agree. We, we we feel sympathetic toward this applicant, but we really have to be objective about. What's required for an application.
I agree, but there's one difference, I think. This is not anything to do with the property other than the placement of a generator, and the only dimension we're concerned with is that one. It's not like an area variance rather, oh, it is.
Talking about the, the, I, I, the, the generator, we're talking about a one-story, uh, wait, what are we talking about, just the generator?
Generator.
Yeah.
I I think it's probably okay.
That's what I was saying, if they can just do that one line, Robin, I agree with you on the survey, but that's not, there there's no improvement there. It's placement of something you could remove the next day.
I I I'm okay with that, if we then, the policy would be where a gen, how old is this survey, which I don't have in front of me?
I don't know.
I think it was twenty sixteen or fifteen, it's not that old.
If it's.
Now, we would have never raised it back then, I think. Actually, I can maybe find it. Yeah, all right.
Seems to me that if you're just doing a generator, I don't have a problem with, with, um. As long as we get a, a representation that there have been no changes to the external from the applicant. Turned out to be wrong, then this would be.
Yeah.
This is, but this would be a carve-out for generators only?
Yeah.
Well, or or an outside, a temp, a non, non-structural. Now, then you got the pad, right?
I think we just have to say for generators and leave it at generators, um, and for everything else, if it comes up, we'll have to see if we want to do it.
Yeah, where the, where the survey depicts everything else but that. Yeah. Just where there's a side yard issue on a generator. Is that all right, Charlie?
It could be a rear yard issue on a generator.
Could be, could be, good, yeah.
That works. Did you want, uh, a correspondence from the applicant that nothing has changed?
Affidavit, I want an affidavit from the applicant that nothing else has changed, and that. But she's got, gotta have the line, you gotta have the measurement by the surveyor. Right?
That one.
Yeah, that you have to have, I'm sorry.
So she just needs one measurement, you want it from a surveyor as to where the generator is gonna go?
No, the side yard, yes, yes.
No, no, from, it's, it's the rear. It it it's. It's the rear line to the property line, there's no, there's no measurement, I'm I'm looking for the survey that she.
Right.
That she gave us.
I'm just thinking, because a surveyor typically only surveys existing conditions, that might be something that she could get from another type of consultant.
Yeah, all she needs to do is get the dimension from the existing building. That's, it's not that there isn't a line from the, from. It's that there's no dimension from the existing building at that point.
Yeah, rear line setback was not on that survey.
Right, I'm looking, I'm looking at it right now.
Fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, it was revised, right?
Survey in possession. December second, twenty fourteen.
Yeah. It was revised, then to show certification, wow, it was revised, then to show certifications, uh.
That's a fair, but that's reasonable, that's not so new, so, um, it's a reasonable.
No, and it's, the original one is nineteen fifty-six? No, dated not two thousand and fourteen, and then it was revised, and so it's two thousand and fourteen, you're right, it's not that.
Well, I can, but I can tell you, having been there myself. Uh, the representation on the survey is exactly what I saw. That building hasn't changed.
All right, so let's, let her give an affidavit that nothing else has changed, and then.
And that's a PVC, yeah, yeah.
Some, some, somebody.
Get a dimension from a surveyor, not, obviously not from the generator, but from the law, from the existing.
From the house.
Yeah, where the generator is gonna go, from the building, at where the generator is gonna go to the, whether it's a side yard.
Who, who, I bet this guy is not in business anymore. The question is, who has his records, cuz that's.
Usually you can, you can look that up, it's there, I think it's pretty easy to access, who own now took over. But Charlie, is this something you're gonna write up, or should I reach out to the applicant?
So, it it, Dave asked, you asked for an affidavit, so.
I think you should, if, what do you think? Well, I mean, I think an affidavit is what you should get.
We're relying on it, and we're doing this instead of a.
Yeah.
Survey that I think an affidavit is appropriate.
Right, and the notary only costs two dollars if you're going to UPS. Free at, free at the bank.
Just so I'm clear, you would still like a revised survey drawing with the the rear dimension on there.
We want the rear dimension specified.
From the, from the house to the property line.
And an affidavit stating that nothing has changed to the exterior of the building.
Right.
Um, you might want to, uh, ask the applicant, Brittany, I would be more than happy to draft the affidavit. Um, she might have, uh, an attorney or a family friend that's able to do it for her at no cost. So you should probably ask her before I expend resources on drafting, it wouldn't take long, but.
Okay.
She has a brother-in-law that's an attorney, or a sister-in-law that's an attorney, it would cost nothing.
Okay. In the event, because it was originally proposed to just withdraw the application fully, in the event that it, you know, cost-wise, it's not something that she wants to do. As far as getting that, if they say it's around relatively the same amount, just to get that line, what happens with a application to be withdrawn? Cuz that'll be the first I've experienced. She did present it that way initially.
Not be that much, there's no reason why a survey.
There's no reason, yeah. Hey, tell it, tell, tell her to fire, I think she can get a price on this.
So your question is not answered, Brittany.
Thank you, thank you, Greta.
Greta, Greta.
Thank you.
If she wants to withdraw the application, simply need a written correspondence saying that she's.
Okay.
The application.
Okay, thank you.
And but tell her to be more optimistic. All right. All right, next Wednesday, next Thursday, right?
Fifth at seven thirty, yep. Next.
Okay. All right, everybody have a wonderful evening. And.
And make a motion to close the meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, aye, aye, all right, and, um. I'm just trying to think about the FEIS thing, all right, I'll go through my notes on that, I've got different notes. And, um. We'll go from there, super. Have a good evening, everybody, and a good week.
Good night.
Good night, good night, Brittany.
Next week.